Koutoukatoa, welcome everyone to this meeting of the Dunedin City Council. Welcome to councillors, to staff and to the public. Our prayer today is led by Colin MacLeod, who is the New Zealand Catholic Bishops Committee for Interfaith Relations Chair. Welcome Colin.
The afternoon, the prayer that I've chosen was used by Mother Teresa. It's a variation of the prayer of St Francis, which she used in addressing the United Nations in 1985. Make us worthy to serve our fellow men and women. Give them through our hands this day their daily bread. And by our understanding, love, give peace and joy. Lord, make me a channel of your peace. That where there is hatred, I may bring love. That where there is wrong, I may bring a spirit of forgiveness. That where there is discord, I may bring harmony. That where there is error, I may bring truth. That where there is doubt, I may bring faith. That where there is despair, I may bring hope. That where there are shadows, I may bring light. That where there is sickness, I may bring joy. Grant that I may seek rather to comfort than to be comforted, to understand than to be understood, to love than to be loved. For it is in forgetting self that one finds. It is in dying that one awakens to eternal life. Amen.
Our councillors, we start with public forum and our first submission at public forum is a bit of a joint effort. Claudia Babarat, Stephanie Post, Tyler Wildin and Isme Blaker will address council on the vision and goals for the Dunedin Town Belt Education Initiative. And can I welcome you up to these chairs here? Oh, there's just the three of you. Welcome. Now, I think that microphone should be on. If you, it should just activate.
So, thank you for welcoming us here. My name is Claudia Babarat. I'm the education coordinator for Town Belt Kaiaiki. Town Belt Kaiaiki is an education program that works with the Dunedin Schools and Early Childhood Centres. We've got nine schools on board at the moment. And what it is, is it's a student-led project, so students are in the driver's seat. We've been given the amazing space of their Dunedin Town Belt to use as an outdoor classroom. So I'm here with two student leaders and a team of student leaders who are creating a vision and goals for what young people would like to achieve here in Dunedin to make a difference in their local community right now. And I'm the glue that connects their vision with their teachers. So encouraging, I work with teachers to encourage them to use the Town Belt as that classroom where not only can they learn the skills and the values of what it means to protect that space and I guess overall thinking about bigger connections, our country and our planet, but I then basically pass those ideas and with the students as well to the teachers so they can teach the things that the students want to know. So flips teaching basically on its head in a way. We have achieved quite a few things already and that is largely with the support of the group that I report to. So that's called the Strategic Leadership Group and it consists of Dunedin City Council, Department of Conservation, the Dunedin Amenities Society, the Runaka, Otago Natural History Trust, the university, the schools themselves with Toitu. I've probably missed a couple, but you get the picture that we are very well supported. And I can tap into the experts of that community to help the schools and wrap around what they would like to achieve. And I'll pass you on now to our Chair of the Student Leadership Group and she would like to spend a minute telling you what they have been up to.
Hello, my name's Stephanie Post and as Claudia has said, I'm the Chair for the Student Leadership Team. So our vision basically comes in two parts. One of them is to improve the Town Belt in lots of different aspects, as in so recreationally, we want to build more tracks, maybe put in better signage, just improve it in that way, increase its biodiversity. So trapping and tracking as well. Bring more art and murals, which Dunedin is quite, you know, known for as well. Include that into the Town Belt and just really integrate our city and the Town Belt and just sort of bond them together a bit closer, like closer. Then the other aspect is getting the students in our schools behind it and really involved. So our student leaders, workers ambassadors for our schools and we take the knowledge and all the ideas that we decided on in our meetings, we take them back to our schools. And so we get all the students really into the Town Belt, using it as an outdoor classroom. Our teachers are really supportive of that as well. So hopefully over the next few years, the Town Belt will be used as an outdoor classroom and a space for like learning, to you know, really just get involved in hands-on activity. Yep. So so far, we've done quite a lot actually for this new project, which is we've done tracking. So all the schools have done some tracking. John McGlashan has started Predator Trapping as well, so a project for that. We've also been working in collaboration with Early Childhood Centres. So student leaders go along with them and they learn together and try things out. Also, we have launched a photography competition, largely supported by the Dunedin Amenities Society. And that is now running in all our different schools and getting students out into the Town Belt, taking photos, just getting really involved. And yeah, so hopefully in the next couple of years, we'll do more projects like that, get whole classes out using the Town Belt and really just make a difference. And because as a young person, I think this is just an incredible opportunity. It's not every day that, you know, adults actually support you to be an adult yourself and really make a change and give back to our community. And yeah, it's just absolutely fantastic and a great opportunity also to grow as a leader and just yeah, get involved and in the community and yeah, thank you. And now I'll pass on to Isme, who's another one of our student leaders.
Hello, everybody. I'm Isme Lees-Pitblaker. I'm from Arthur Street School. Talking about...
What does the initiative mean to you?
The Dunedin Initiative means something for me because the adults are giving us a chance to be a leader and... I love in the Town Belt Initiative how we can see the birds and how we can get up close to the wildlife. In fact, today we were at Jubilee Park and we tramped right through the bush.
All right, and there's a little video that was shot for us recently that we'd really like you to watch.
There's only three Town Belts in the whole entire world. We're pretty lucky to have such an incredible thing in our city. It has so much potential. It can be such a beautiful place.
I work with young people who tell me, you know, they usually they don't have the chance to make a difference in their community. This program allows them to make a difference that is real and it's right now. So I'm being completely inspired by what the students are coming up with for projects. They want to turn the Town Belt into a sanctuary for both wildlife and people, but also to encourage teachers and students to get out into that space. The dreams are about kids getting involved in conservation activities and the kids being people who will fight for those values.
The schools, they're surrounded by a community of experts, of people who also care about the Town Belt. It's only year one this year and we have seven schools on board. Say in 10 years' time, I'm hoping that all 30 schools in the middle of all the distance of the Town Belt will be involved in this initiative and that the Town Belt will be this beautiful wildlife corridor. People want to go to the Town Belt, use it as a space that they know that students have made better for them to use. I'm hoping that the students that I work with, that they're taking those values that they learned today by taking action in this program into their chosen careers.
Will contribute into something that one day, when I'm not here anymore, it might still be going on and I'll be glad to be one of the most.
I'm really excited to see the end result. It's going to be awesome what we can do, so dear guys.
Are you happy to take questions from the councillors? Councillor Benson-Pope.
I just want to thank you for the excellent work you're doing, all of you. Well done. But more importantly, are you happy with the level of support that you've had from the city to date?
Very, yes.
Doesn't mean you're not allowed to ask for more, but okay, so far.
I think because, I think because it's new and because people understand the scope of the project. And I must say also because in a way, we're leading this way of education along with Kids Restore the Keppeland, Kids Grinning Topo. It's one of the few programs, or it is the one program, but the third example of it in the country. And other cities are now asking us for advice because they want to incorporate something very similar into their, into their education framework.
Mr Hawkins.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. Kia ora koutou. I'd just like to add my, my vote of thanks to, I was fortunate enough to be wandering through the Town Belt, admittedly past my bedtime recently and I heard the mighty Ruru calling and it's a beautiful thing to be able to experience that in this part of the country. And just, just to acknowledge that one of the city's three main goals under Teo Turo, our environment strategy is Dunedin people caring for and being connected to and championing our natural environment. So I'd like to thank you for the work that you're doing and showing leadership around us achieving that as a community. Thanks.
Councillor Gary.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. I wanted to say to the two young student leaders how inspiring it was to hear from you. And I had a question for you. I noticed that you both, Stephanie and Isme, said that it was really special that the adults trusted you to, to lead this. If you had to choose one other thing that attracted you to be involved or you love about this project, what would that be? Isme?
The birds.
The birds. And Stephanie?
One thing, I think just working with other people and other students and just becoming inspired myself to do.
Thank you. And can you tell us what year you're in at school, the two of you? Isme?
I'm in year five.
And Stephanie?
I'm in year 12.
You're a credit to your schools.
Other question, councillor.
I've got, you referenced, or I think it was in the video or someone commented that there was only two other cities in the, that had Town Belts. What were they?
So Victorian Town Belts, that should be, but you guys know, you answer this question.
Adelaide and Wellington.
The questions? Thank you very much for coming and presenting and thank you for the work you're doing. It's much appreciated. Our next submitter is, represents Cohousing Oteporti Limited, Catherine Spencer. Welcome Catherine.
My name's Catherine Spencer, as the mayor has just kindly introduced me, and this is my colleague and fellow co-host of Francis Ross. And there are a number of other prospective Cohousing people supporting in the Public Gallery. So thank you for giving us this opportunity to appear before you again. The last time we were here regarding the possibility of including social housing in the Cohousing project, we had a good discussion about the principles of Cohousing and in particular, the benefits of social housing within that context. By the end of the discussion, we were delighted that everyone in the room gave their full support to the proposal to buy two units in this 24-unit Cohousing development. The principles remain unchanged. However, what has changed is the impact two years has had on the project's costings and the very real price increases from our initial forecasts, meaning that the costs of the two units unfortunately do exceed the budget set two years ago. As you will be aware, building costs have soared over that period and continue to do so. Building in New Zealand has always been expensive and we have felt the impact of those costs on our project. And believe me, we have worked very, very hard at keeping the costs down as it has had a huge impact on all of us in the group. But we also know that if we want different, healthier, sustainable wellbeing outcomes, then we have to do things differently. Cohousing and passive house design are two such ways of doing so. Being at the forefront of change where there are no precedents or blueprints inevitably costs more. So putting the time lag in perspective, Dunedin house prices have soared 20% over the two-year period. That's taken from this month's NID market report. We also understand that there's a chronic shortage of social housing in Dunedin, as was recently reported in the OTT on the 26th of July, where they said that 118 people or families are waiting for government housing. That's an increase of 36% since December and 76% since June 2014. And the DCC housing waiting list is more than 180 people. So again, what we can offer you are two social housing units at cost price. Urban Cohousing Oteporti Limited is a not-for-profit company and we are offering two highly efficient units along with shared facilities at cost. It is a small start to changing how we live. We are ready to go. Everything, including builders and bank finance, is ready for a build start at the end of September, early October, should the DCC approve the purchase of these two units today. As the costs have increased, we are needing to return to you as a council for you to decide whether the cost increases are reasonable, given the increase in building and other costs over the past two years. And if the costs are deemed too high, we suggest and are able to downsize one of the two units for you in order to mitigate those increases. We're aware of your fiscal constraints and we're prepared to be flexible. So we urge you to continue your commitment to buying two social housing units for the city within this project. The goals have not changed, only the cost. And that is sometimes the price of having a vision. So just briefly to summarize, there's four themes coming through. From the outset, High Street Cohousing was to be a diverse community and social housing was integral to that original vision. So it's a unique opportunity for you to create a supportive living environment for those in need of help. Secondly, the DCC agreed to participate in the project late 2016. Since then, average house prices, as I said, have risen 20%. This means that the DCC investment of 690,000 would be the equivalent of 828,000 today. And this is not very far away from the combined cost of the one-bedroom original unit we are offering and the downsized two-to-three bedroom unit, which we are now offering. And it is a much smaller increase on that budgeted figure. Thirdly, our bank has agreed in principle to granting us a loan for this project. The bank is not only interested in your financial participation here, but places great value on your support as the local authority in less tangible terms. And finally, our strong preference is for the council to buy two units, a one-bedroom and we are suggesting a downsized two-to-three bedroom. We believe two social housing tenants is better both for the community and also for the tenants. However, as mentioned earlier, we are negotiable and if the council were only able to invest in one unit, either the original three-bedroom on Elva Street or the two-to-three on High Street, those could both be options. And both of those units give the council greater flexibility than simply a one-bedroom. So for example, you could have an intergenerational family, say a grandparent looking after a grandchild, or in the future, a refugee extended family. Either of those would come in well below the original target budget. So we look forward to your continued support in this exciting venture and we're very happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, councillors? Councillor Steames.
Thank you, Your Worship. Catherine, if we chose to go for the downsized three-bedroom to a two-bedroom with a possibility of three small and the single, what does that do to the estimated cost now?
I'm aware though, that would bring it up to about that 20% rise that's been experienced in house prices. I'm going to distribute this paper with some figures on it for the private part of your meeting and you will have those concretely in front of you.
Thank you.
Other questions, councillors? Councillor Law.
I just had a question regarding, you said in total you will have 24 units?
Yes.
And the other 22 are all sold?
Yes.
So presumably there are other people that would be willing to invest if council didn't invest?
We don't have people lined up for those council, the units that have the council names on them. We have developed a waiting list, but we have already offered, so at the moment, the council has its name down for a one-bedroom and a three-bedroom on Elva Street. And there is an external investor who currently has a name down for the D1, two-to-three bedroom that we're offering you in place of the Elva Street. That person does not want to own that, but she is buying us some time so that during the build, we can find another person. But we don't have anybody to cover all three of those units at the moment and it is a bank requirement that they're 100% sold before we sign the contract with the bank. The bank actually only has offered us that contract at the end of last week and we have until the 14th of September to sign it. And we do not have time to find two other investors or Cohouses in that short space of time because it's, there is a process that we go through, an induction process that we go through to make sure that the fit is right for prospective Cohouses.
My next question would be, if the money that you're talking about borrowing from the bank, what is that money going to pay for? Is that just to buy, to do the build itself?
We have costed out the whole project to the kind of detail that you never see on the television makeover programs. And so it pay, the cost that the bank sees of the whole project includes the land, it includes all the professional fees, it includes the consent fees, it includes all the, you know, engineers and design, it includes all the building fees, it includes all the legal fees, which are substantial, the unit titling, until we're ready to give people the keys. And the bank has stipulated that we have to, as a group, have at least 32% of that covered. And then we can borrow the residual for doing the bulk of the build.
So in another way, would you be able to, would that imply that the million dollars or whatever that the council would put in would be effectively just a deposit for other people? You would be using that that way?
No, the council money that would be put forward as a, everybody in the project is required to have at least a 20% stake in the project and that is in the form of a loan to the company. We've made an exception for council that that equivalent amount of money, and that's restricted by some of the current LVR restrictions, goes into a lawyer's trust account. That money is not accessible to us for any of the build. Yeah, so we have to come up with what would be the council's stake in the project because we can't use that money. So we are in effect helping you guys out, really.
Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, Your Worship. Kia ora kourua. Just picking up on one of Councillor Law's questions, if you require 100% of the units to be sold to go ahead and there are three and we pick up one or two, that still doesn't get you over the line, does it?
If the council buys two units, we have 100% take-up because we have a supportive external investor for that final unit. If the council doesn't, then we have two or one unit still to fill and it doesn't get us over the line at this point. It would, you know, we would have to delay things.
And that would be the same if council were to decide to purchase one?
That is probably the case, although of course it's easier to fill one than two. And it is like possible that, but we don't know because we can't do this because of our, our processes and order of timing. But it is possible that there is one person on the waiting list that would be interested in the Elva unit, the three-bedroom unit on Elva Street. But we don't know that because we haven't, we can't ask them that because it's not available at the moment because it has the council's name on it.
When you say, yeah, because I'm interested in that because you say, you say that there's no, there is a waiting list, but not for the ones that are nominally assigned to the council? Or is it the case that the ones that have been nominally assigned to the council are the ones that don't have a waiting list? So do we have the ones that nobody else wants?
No, no, no. You have, you have had these two units for the best part of the last 18 months and they have not changed. We have, and the reason why there is now a two-to-three bedroom available is at the end of last year, we did a major redesign of the two remaining five-bedroom units into two further upstairs and downstairs units in the pattern that we already have of a one-bedroom unit underneath and a two-to-three bedroom above. So that's why there is now... So that's why there is now a two-to-three bedroom unit available. But it wasn't when we first were discussing with the council and assigning those.
Thank you. And just one further question and it's around the operating model because you talked about interviewing people and making sure that it's the right fit for tenants and how that would work and apologies if I'm relitigating a conversation we had last time. How would that work with a, a, a community housing or a social housing provider? Would it still be, would it be the expectation of the community that they would still ultimately have a say in which tenants we would choose to put there?
Okay, so cohousing is self-select. So it's not that we interview and we decide, oh yes, you know, we like the look of your, your cloth and your face, we're gonna let you in. It's, it's a process to go through that means that people understand the principles of cohousing, that it is in fact where they want to be, that they have the financial wherewithal to be able to buy in. And we don't choose those people, but we make sure that they have the substantial information they need to make a good decision. And for any tenanted property, whether it be social housing or whether, you know, I go away for 12 months and rent out my house, those tenants are expected to participate in the cohousing kaupapa. There is a covenant on the title, which is part of our resource consent that ensures that the whole project and development remains cohousing. And there is an expectation that any tenants coming in would, it will be then a body corporate operation and that the cohousing kaupapa will be followed. So we have particular processes for discussion and making decisions and it is non-hierarchical. So the renters would have the same level of input as anybody who was an owner-occupier.
As part of the assessment, you talk about people having enough capital to buy in as part of the assessment or the conversation, whether people have enough social capital to be able to participate fairly in a participatory governance model? Because it's not, and I don't know how you assess that, but it is a question as to whether that's part of that consideration?
We have a particular way in which we do discussions that, I mean, I've been part of an organization that has used a type of consensus decision-making for 200 to 300 years. And this model that we have adopted uses a much more refined way of ensuring that consensus decision-making, it's a colored card system. It means it's much easier for people who are less verbal to participate in both the discussions and everybody who is there has to participate in the decisions. And that's graded by a very hierarchical set of colored cards. I'm very happy to explain that in more depth. It is a wonderful, flexible way of working and we have been really surprised about how it becomes so solution-based. It, it removes people's abilities and, and, you know, some of us lacking in social graces. It focuses on how can we move forward as a group? And yeah, it's, it's a delight to work with, really.
Councillor Laufisa. Oh, councillor Staines.
Worship, we are out of time for public forum, so if we want to continue, we will need to move to extend the public forum. And I'll move that we extend.
Second councillor Wiley. All those in favor, please say aye. Karen. Councillor Laufisa.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you. In terms of being visionary and at cutting edge, and forgive me if this was asked in 2012, are there other local, are you aware of other local bodies in Oteporti that are pursuing similar partnerships with group places?
We, there is only one other established cohousing group in the country, that's Earthsong, We're the Second. There are some other nascent groups that we are in contact with in New Plymouth and Wellington and Nelson, but they are much earlier on in their process. Also one in Christchurch that actually started before us and they don't have property yet. So none of these other groups have property yet. So it, it would be kind of jumping the gun to, yeah, be working with councils at this point for them.
So what might you say to local bodies such as us who are, who are not convinced or have the risk of risk apart, going further in terms of the investment that you require?
I would say that it would actually give you lots of brownie points. It would see you as socially progressive, environmentally progressive, looking at, yeah, there is a small risk, but we've actually, the, the cohouses themselves are the ones actually taking the risk rather than the council because of what I explained earlier. And I think, you know, it goes back to our vision. We have to change the way we live and this is a small step in our project at two levels with the cohousing and the passive house design to do that. And I would urge all councils and all institutions that are interested in social housing to look at supporting both cohousing, but also a much higher building standard, which means it gets people out of fuel poverty and it means that they have more money to pay the rent, they're happier tenants and you know, if you have happier tenants, that they look after the place and they give back more to their community.
Further questions, councillors? Councillor Lawrie.
Look, I'm just, I may have missed something, I'm just not sure what I've missed, but you're saying that what you're doing is doing us a favor and yet I can't quite see the favor when we pay 100% upfront to buy a share of something. The million dollars is upfront, is it not?
No, 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 no. You've so far put in a nominal 10,000, which is what all of us have put in to buy shares in the company. Then there is a 20% LVR requirement from the bank. We do require you to put that in, but that goes into a lawyer's trust account. The rest of us who have put in at least 20%, but to get the whole group up to over 32% have put in that money as a loan to the company to enable the company to do the development. Your money sits absolutely safely in a lawyer's trust account. You pay the, that money over and the balance of that only at the time that we give you the keys and this unit title and we have certificates of compliance.
So at that point, we would own outright?
Yes.
And 100% debt-free if that had been paid?
Yes, yes. So it'd be like 2020 sometime.
Further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.